All right, we'll call the meeting to order. Roll call.
Mayor Reese.
Here.
Councilmember Osk.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Sholdas.
Here.
O'Brien.
Yeah.
Butterfield.
Here.
Osmus.
Here.
Fagerly.
Here.
All members are present.
Raise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? If not, we will have a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Consent items. Do we have any?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. On the consent this evening is the consider approval for the city council minutes of February 6th, the Wilmer Municipal Utilities Minutes of Commission Minutes of February 13th, Planning Commission Minutes of October 19th and December 7th, the accounts payable report for February 2nd, 2023 through February 13th, 2023, a resolution for wastewater to purchase the purchase of a Polaris Ranger, resolution for wastewater to purchase a half-ton pickup, resolution for wastewater to purchase UV hydraulic wiper wipers, and a resolution to purchase a golf cart for the brush site, and a resolution for the Wilmer Township Fire Agreement, as well as Planning Commission Board Member approvals for Ivan Philzaim and Christopher Buzzio, and for the council's information is the building report for January 2023. And again, for information is an applicant for the Planning Commission, John Christensen.
Any questions or motion to?
Move to approve.
Second.
We're on motion and a second. Roll call.
Got a question.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm just moving the train along.
That's all right. I would just like to pull C and D for just some questions on the planning commission minutes.
All right. Anybody else? Rick?
I'd like to pull aye.
All right. Anybody else? Now, do I approve the?
The remaining.
Ones that aren't pulled. Okay. We need a motion to approve the remaining.
Still moved.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Was that supposed to be a roll call?
Mr. Mayor, yes, that should have been. Needs to be a roll call.
All right.
Councilmember Osk.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Sholdas.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right. Audrey?
Thank you, Mayor Reese. Just a question. I know we've been behind on getting the planning commission minutes, and I see that there are a lot of meetings where they didn't have a quorum. But it would be really nice to receive the staff comments and document documents that are usually attached to the agenda just for ease of reading and reviewing. It's pretty hard to follow the minutes sometimes without having the information that the staff provided on some of the items. And so I'm putting in a request that the minutes have the information that the planning commission received to make their decisions. If that is something that's possible, that would be great. Also, there is, one of the minutes refers to that the planning commission asked for the amendment for minutes to be corrected, but we have not seen correction to those minutes too. So just looking for a little more detail with those minutes.
Leslie?
Planning Commission agendas are posted on the website too, so they do go along with those minutes. But we want to add them. That's we can do that.
Okay. Anything else? Councilmember Nelson?
No. I just appreciate that. I don't think it. I think it's hard to go back and find the agenda and the documents when you're reading the minutes. And so I think they should be part of the minutes as it relates to staff recommendations. So I'll make a motion for those approval with and request that we receive the updated or the amended minutes also. So thank you.
All right. That was a motion?
Yes.
Okay. Rick seconded it. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item I, it's the Public Works Golf Cart Purchase, and I know it's needed. But listening to the radio in our legislature recently, the state is thinking about eliminating all gas engines and for chainsaws, mowers, things like that. And this one's going to be a gas one, which it should be. But what happens if they change the law in 2025 and we have to go electric?
No, everything would be grandfathered in. Anything you would purchase after that date then would have to be electric.
Do we know that for sure?
I am positive of that because it would be very difficult for every city to repurchase all the electric or all their gas-powered items in one year, unless the state's going to give us all the money.
Yeah, I agree, but I just want to make sure.
Yeah.
All right. I move to file that item.
All right.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, that needs to be a roll call vote if it's a resolution.
I'm sorry. Roll call. Did we have to do that on the planning commission then too?
No, Mr. Mayor.
You're going to do a roll call?
Yes.
Okay.
Councilmember Osk.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Sholdas.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Passes. Motion passes.
I assume we have nobody on the open forum. I don't see anybody.
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Public hearing on a potentially dangerous dog. Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. This evening's public hearing was scheduled to be held for pending the appeal of potentially dangerous dog designation. The dog owner was returning to Wilmer from a previous appointment out of state. Needless to say, severe weather created a safety issue for travel and is recommendation from staff to continue the hearing to the next council meeting on March 6th, please.
Okay.
So moved.
Need a motion to continue?
So moved.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. All right, tonight is the State of the City address. Tonight's a night to reflect on our progress and look forward to the future of Wilmer. And first of all, I'd like to thank the citizens of Wilmer for their overwhelming support in the election. I count it as a great privilege to serve as your mayor. I promise I will look at each action, motion, resolution that passes over my desk determining if the action is good for our city. The city of Wilmer has an experienced city council and I believe will also perform with the best interest of the citizens of Wilmer. We have experienced and highly we have experienced and highly qualified city employees in each department of the city. Between the city administrator and the employees under her direction, the city of Wilmer is in good hands, and I have great confidence that they will also perform in a manner that will complement our city. Thanks to our previous mayor, Marv Calvin, and his sterling job of serving the city for the last eight years. Mayor Calvin, thank you for your well-thought, hard work. I'd also like to extend a special thanks to retiring council member Andrew Plowman and welcome council member Plowman's replacement Carl Sholdas to the city council. COVID taught us a lot of things, and having to update software systems for the ease of remote connection for council and staff was the biggest takeaway. We all pray that this is in the past, but we have learned. And so council and staff have been transitioning to a new software system, starting with payroll and council agenda. As of the first of the year, the city is using K-Pay, K-Pay for payroll processing and Civic Plus for council agenda packets. As we all become better users of Civic Plus software, citizens will be able to see and follow the agenda on the monitors. Council members will be able to vote electronically, displaying their vote on the monitors. Electronic voting will only happen when the entire council is present. State statute requires voice votes when a councilperson is attending the meeting virtually. Staff is also working on implementation of multiple software platforms for all departments. Implementation of all the platforms will take almost two years to implement. The first platform and the longest implementation is finance because all departments are linked to financials. Department heads will be able to access their expenses and their expense accounts, approve invoices, search for vendor payments, track grants and project costs, and create reports for their specific needs. The implement implementation of Tyler Industries technologies will bring the city to the electronic age in all departments from electronic ticketing, invoicing, inventory controls, permitting, asset management, budgeting, grant management, and for citizens, electronic payments and mobile reporting of problems. Many, many time and labor-intensive workflows will be eliminated from the upgrade, and this new software will allow Wilmer to change with the tech industry. We continue to work with state legislators to support bonding money for the MUC's water treatment plant, increasing local government aid to cities, support the use of local option sales tax to provide street funding, and continue to support grant dollars for programs such as Safe Streets for All, the DNR Trailhead, and age-friendly communities. The mayor's Housing Task Force completed and presented their report to the city council on October 2022 with the findings that single-family housing is an urgent need for our community. This is supported by the Wilmer Housing Study, which was presented by EDC Director Aaron Bachman two weeks ago. Even though Wilmer has seen growth with several multifamily units built over the past few years and another in the working stages for construction in 2023, there's still a need for more single-family units. We are going to have to be creative by working with the county, HRA, and private partnerships as to how we address new single-family housing, unoccupied, single-family homes needing rehabilitation, aging population that would like to downsize to smaller homes and better suit their needs and lifestyle. There is no shortcut to fix this problem. This will take long-range planning and hard work from a lot of agencies and private businesses. But I want to ensure Wilmer residents that housing will continue to be a priority of this council. Wilmer continues to see economic growth in retail business with Slim Chickens, planning construction this spring, Popeye Chicken Construction sometime this summer, and TJ Maxx plans are currently in the review process. Commercial construction also continues with plans for the construction of storage units along 22nd Street Southwest and a Les Schwab tires to be built in front of Menards along First Street. The city also sees the possibility of industrial growth with Nexus 360, drafting a purchase agreement for 134 acres in Industrial Park. That will include the use of rail off of the new BNSF Y. Recently, BNSF asked the city to become a rail-certified site, opening new opportunities to rail business. To go along with the Nexus 360 project, we were recently awarded up to $900,000 for trunk highway eligible expenses for improvements along State Highway 40. All of this is due to hard work from the Candy High County City of Wilmer Economic Development Commission. The EDC continues to work very hard to grow our community along with the county. Thank you, Aaron, and staff for all the great work. The Planning Department continues to work on a citywide broadband project that would provide 500 meggs up and 500 meggs down, placing Wilmer as the only city with this type of service in the state of Minnesota. Council recently approved Hometown Fiber to partner with this in this project. There are still many processes and information that needs to be collected and evaluated, but plans are to bring the city of Wilmer state-of-the-art broadband service starting next year. The EDC and Southwest Initiative Foundation are teaming up to bring grant funding of $740,000 to downtown and business district. These grants can be used for carpet, HVAC, room remodeling, special equipment, windows, doors, building signage, building improvements, and parking lot improvements. Funds were appropriated from the state due to COVID and will be distributed by the Southwest Initiative as reimbursement of expenses. Grant applications will be opening in March with hopes to award applicants in April. For more information, business owners and building owners may contact Sarah Swedberg at the EDC. One of the greatest accomplishments Wilmer citizen citizens did was the passing of the local option sales tax or LOST. Most of the LOST projects, Robins Island, Swanson Field, Recreation Fields, and Recreation Event Center will be completed this spring as staff and contractors continue to correct punch list items. After the final accounting of project costs are complete, the city will be able to discuss with legal staff if there are any further recreational improvements that could be undertaken as authorized by the state of Minnesota. Correcting stormwater issues is also part of the LOST funding, and as street reconstruction occurs or businesses expand, the city is working to correct those issues when these opportunities arise. Wilmer has recently been awarded $70,000 from the National Fitness for a National Fitness Court and Blue Cross Blue Shield for the construction of a fitness court. Wilmer was designated as a Tier One candidate because of the city's ongoing investment in parks, trails, and the current LOST project improvements. There will be two sides of the fitness facility. One side will have fitness equipment, with the other side is an open court to be used for various exercise classes or programs. Each year, the city's capital improvement plan includes $160,000 toward park upgrades, and this grant allows the city to bring a new outdoor fitness opportunity without investing 100% of the cost. The city also looking to upgrade the Wilmer Trailhead located by the Civic Center by applying for $187,500 DNR grant. This grant would be the first phase of a three-phase project to provide a restroom facility, an open air shelter, and reconstruction of the existing parking lot. We will also be working with local DNR office that may provide further funding for the Trailhead project. With the opening of the Recreational Event Center, the Wilmer Auditorium is being used considerably less. Council and staff will be discussing the future of the auditorium this year. Recently, council approved digitizing the auditorium facade and War Memorial Room to preserve these works of art for the future. There was great concern from the historical report completed last year of how long the cracked sculptures attached to the front of the building would last due to the Minnesota freeze, thaw, weather conditions. And digitizing will forever preserve these beautiful works of art forever. Council will also be seeking proposals early part of spring for the necessary lead abatement work that has to be postponed, has been postponed over the past couple of years. Major hires in 2022 was the newly created position of Operations Director Kyle Box. Kyle was the city clerk at Marshall and has brought along a wealth of knowledge and experience. We look forward to continuing to work with Kyle long into the future. Tonight, council will be hiring another new created position, the Director of Community Growth. This is a new position for the city, which came about with the support from a Blue Cross Blue Shield contribution of $450,000 to build on the work and programs developed during a five-year health and wellness program funded by Blue Cross Blue Shield. The city will use these funds to gradually fund this position fully to the city budget over the next four years. Later this summer, the city will begin the process of hiring a Public Works Director before Gary Manzer's retirement in September. Gary started with the city working as Civic Arena Maintenance, followed by Gary moving to the Public Works Department as an operator, and then later on becoming Public Works Superintendent. In 2020, when the Public Works Director Sean Christensen resigned his position, Gary stepped up to help the city fill the duties as interim Public Works Director. Last year, council approved Gary's role as the full-time Public Works Director. Council and staff can't express how appreciative we are, we all are for the extra work Gary took on as Public Works Director and filling the void of superintendent position Gary held over the past few years. The city is currently in the process of filling the superintendent position, and the and the search for a Public Works Director will begin mid-June. The Wilmer Police Department is planning on hiring the sergeant position left by the retiring of Officer Yonkey. They are expecting to start the process sometime in April, followed by hiring another patrol officer later this year. The fire department is also accepting applications for members. Wilmer's fire department is a paid volunteer position. Over the next few months, council will continue discussing the city hall and community center. Bruce Shortsman and staff from BKV Group continue to work on two site plans for the city hall as council directed at the work session conducted on November 29th, 2022. Staff and council continue working on scheduling a workshop mid-March to further discuss designs along with preliminary cost estimates and bonding with BKV Group. I'm requesting that the that the council place these two projects as a high priority for 2023. These two projects will be used by this community for the next 75 to 100 years. It is my hope that the council decides on site location for the city hall and community center this spring so that we can start the next phase of final design and hiring a project risk manager, followed by construction plans to be completed by the end of 2023, forbidding in early 2024. Construction will not be any less expensive, and our city deserves to have a city hall and community center that reflects why we continue to live, work, and play in this wonderful community. Citizens of Wilmer in recent years have built a better future. We have made investments within our city that brought about some wonderful amenities to our city. Again, Robins Island, Swanson Field, Recreation Fields, and Recreation Event Center. And even though the destination playground is a few years old, it continues to be an attraction for young families. All these amenities are attractive to businesses and companies to looking at locating within our city. I am optimistic and remain boldly confident in the future of the city of Wilmer. Next item is the consideration of hiring Jose Pablo Obregon for the Director of Community Growth. Leslie?
Good evening, council. Over the past six months, we have been in the search of a new Director of Community Growth. This was an undertaking that was brought to us by Blue Cross Blue Shield. We were asked if the city was interested in establishing this full-time position, and Blue Cross Blue Shield offered the support by providing $450,000 toward funding this project. Council approved this position as a grade 17 with a salary range of $92,596 to $120,375. Over this time, we received roughly 24 applications throughout this process. Some were local and some were from outside California, to name a few, Illinois. We purposely left this open as a until-filled position because we weren't sure how many applicants we were going to receive, and we wanted to make sure that we were getting enough applicants to fill this new position. It is quite a required skill set that not many have out there in this world right now. Our interview committee was Councilmember Justin Osk, Luann Sitzma, Kyle Box, and we had Sarah Sitzma from Blue Cross Blue Shield also join us along with myself. Before Christmas, we had interviewed five applicants. We had offered one applicant to come and visit Minnesota, and he then considered it for almost a week. And then he looked at it again and thought that, well, no, it probably wasn't the right time for him to move to Minnesota for various reasons. So he backed out. So we continued our search, and we reviewed our applicants again. And that's what brings us here tonight. Mr. Obregon had submitted his application. We conducted an interview, and we would like to introduce Mr. Obregon tonight. He has currently, he sits on the Minnesota Council Foundations as Director of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. Prior to that, he was with Southwest Initiative for a good six years. His primary roles during his tenure was responsible for leading strategy development and implementation, leading the efforts to advance diversity, equity, and inclusion. He brings with us a great experience and along with that, experience with the city of Wilmer, addressing diversity, equity, and inclusion with his great work that he did with Vision 2040. And then also with Blue Cross Blue Shield, he worked with them during that five-year time with the health and wellness issues, advising Wendy Foley, great lady, on how to make contacts and such through all his positions he's held here over time. He also was a past board member of the Candy High County Drug Free Community, past board chair of Pioneer PBS TV, past advisory committee member of Ridgewater College, and recipient of the Touch a Life Quanis Award. I'd like to introduce you for any questions to Mr. Pablo Obregon.
Congratulations, Pablo. Thank you, and good evening, everyone. It's my pleasure to be in front of you, knowing that every time that I'm experiencing a big snowstorm, something good is going to happen to me. I was here in May of 1992, and as I was introduced to Wilmer, it was a late snowstorm. And then I was arriving to Minnesota in the fall of 91 for the Halloween storm. So here we are in another event with the snow involved, which reminds me that it is a good evening for me. So I just wanted to thank you for the opportunity, and if you have any questions for me, I will be more than happy to answer them.
Anybody got questions for Pablo? Well, we look forward to it.
I was just gonna, I believe we need a motion to approve. And I would offer that motion to approve the hiring of Pablo Obregon, so. Second.
We have a second. Discussion. If none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Welcome.
Welcome, Pablo. We look forward to working with you. We look forward to working with you.
Same here. Thank you very much.
2023 Street Improvement Projects Approved Plans and Specs to Advertise for Bids. Jared?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. In your packets this evening is a resolution to approve plans and specifications and authorize advertisement for bids. This is the next step in the process with obtaining pricing for these projects from contractors. The projects, and I can list them here, for 2301A is the Gorton Avenue area, 2301B is the 13th Grace Race, 8th and 10th, 2301C Irene Augusta and Mary. The 2303 is the 23rd Street Southeast area overlays, 2304 parking lot and path improvements that includes the block 22 parking lot and Sunrise Path. And then 2308 are seal coating improvements on various streets throughout the city. The total estimated cost is $20,953,984. And as I indicated, there is a resolution in your packets this evening, and I'd certainly welcome any questions that council might have.
Any questions? If not, roll call. Introduce the resolution.
Yes. Councilmember Osk?
We need a motion.
You're sorry? Are we waiting for a motion? My mistake, I apologize. I thought we had a motion.
No, we don't have the introduction of the resolution.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Am I doing that wrong?
We're good.
Okay. All right. Roll call.
Councilmember Osk?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Sholdas?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Butterfield?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
That motion passes.
All right. Anything else, Jared?
That's all I had this evening.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Park and Rec Audio-Visual Equipment Purchase. Who's doing this, Kyle or Kyle's doing it?
It's a joint effort.
Okay. Oh, there's Jonah.
We'll tag team this one again tonight.
He was hiding, Bill.
He's hiding corners.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight is a joint request coming from the IT and Park and Rec Departments is requesting approval to purchase audiovisual equipment for the Civic Center, or Civic Center Events and Recreation Center. This equipment will add the video conferencing capabilities to three spaces in the building. It also provides two mobile projector and screens to be used throughout the entire building, and then funds that were previously identified in the 2023 CIP would be used for this purchase if approved by council. And if there's any questions on the specifics or specifications of the items, Jonah would be happy to answer them.
Make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a introduction of a resolution, right? Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
We got a second. Roll call.
Councilmember Osk?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Sholdas?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Butterfield?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
That motion passes.
All right. Thanks, Jonah. Thank you, Kyle. Hudding Annexation, Justice.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So several, I guess at this point about several months ago, we were approached by Henry and Alice Oding seeking to annex into the city due to a failure of their sewer, and just kind of, staff has followed the process of talking to the necessary department heads, reaching out to the township, and then also consulting legal counsel, just kind of concerning if we could annex in a property that didn't have contiguous zoning, with that being a residential zoning right behind Jennio. And it was an issue with that, and then I think just kind of change of hands, and then like some weather things that kind of prevented them from getting to plan the commission. But for you tonight is the joint resolution agreement to be presented to you all, approved by y'all, and then be taken to the township for final approval of the annexation. And so one of the things that's different about this annexation versus annexations in the past is that due to the minimal amount, since it's just a residential annexation, we'd like to pay them in one lump sum instead of having to pay them over a course of five years. That was one of the things with past annexations where we were sending, we were having to write checks to the township over a course of seven to eight years, sometimes with different tax amounts. And so that's the one difference for this annexation from ones in the past. So with that, turn it back over to you for any questions.
Any questions? Councilmember Osk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm noticing on the picture that you provided of the property that it looks like there's another parcel owned by the same party that's larger. We're not annexing that clearly. Is there a reason why not?
No, so there's the one that's behind it that is technically already within city limits, and then there's the house part that is, that we are annexing. And so I'm not sure why. There's just a lot with this, since I think he's been offered several times by Jennio for them to buy the property and said no. And so here we are. But, yeah.
So we're annexing the part that's in green?
Yep.
And then the rest of the property that kind of L-shaped around it, we're not annexing that, and that's not currently part of the city either, correct?
Yeah.
Or it is part of the city?
No.
Currently is part of the city?
Yeah, currently is part of the city.
Thank you for the clarification.
Yeah.
Yeah, Audrey?
Thank you, Mayor Reese. I was really surprised to see that this was not part of the city, and so my question is, do we have any other odd, outlying properties, like?
Depends on what you mean by odd.
Well, I guess I was thinking, you know, if you go west of this, I know there are some, but I was really surprised to see that this piece wasn't annexed already, so.
Yeah, I think it's a lot of sentimental bio. He's owned that house since 1960, and so that used to just kind of be the middle of nowhere, and then all of a sudden, Wilmer found him. So I think for him, it never really made sense up until very recently, and so.
Wasn't the Jennio property always part of the city, though, the rest of that?
I'm not sure. I've been, I guess, because that was like a part of the old industrial park that got, the industrial part that got built out to him, so.
Okay.
I know Jennio has tried to acquire this property for many years.
Yeah, no, I've been aware. I just was, I just found it interesting that they aren't part of the city of farmers.
Councilmember Butterfield?
Now, would this be considered being an industrial park now?
No, so it's still going to like maintain like its zoning unless eventually he sells it and they decide to tear it down, and then it'd probably be rezoned into industrial. I don't, we probably wouldn't let them rebuild it.
How was that, that work keeping it residential when the industrial park's right there next to it?
Yeah.
You know, we tried, we looked at something earlier on doing one over to retail, and that one got shot down because it was industrial. I can't see moving this into the city with it being industrial park and having residential in the industrial park.
Yeah, so that was one of the questions that staff had as well, since it is surrounded by industrial on all other sides, and it is residential. That was, we're not, it's not, we are not forbidden from doing that by law. Like, we can do that, we can annex in a non-contiguous property, and so that was one of the concerns that we had as staff. And so this is different because it is already an existing use. We're not changing the use of anything, it's just bringing it into the city limits for city services. And so I agree with you, like, so if we were, so if they were to knock down this house and then rebuild on it, that'd be a different thing that I don't think we'd allow. We'd probably force them to probably just annex it, or sell it or something with industrial.
Well, that's one thing that got brought up with the Ronner's building. It was used as retail commercial, and it got shot down trying to rezone it. Back to that would be industrial park. Now we're looking at a piece of property touching right up next to an industrial park, and now we want to have residential there? Then we have to go back and reevaluate Mr. Ronner's petition to have that switched over from industrial to commercial.
Yeah, so one of the things that was different about the Ronner property was that Ronner's property had a period of vacancy that triggered, essentially, like, the grandfathered use ended with the vacancy and like the change of use. And so the vacancies are what triggered that. And so how this is different is that there is no vacancy here, this is just annexing into the city for certain utilities. So like I said, if they were, if this was new construction, if they were trying to annex in, this is something that we would not allow on the staff side. And so since this is already an existing use and just annexing in for services, this is why we're able to do this.
Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor Reese. Just to follow up to that, there are lots of buildings on that. Is it really residential, or should it be agriculture or zone? Because there's more than, there's some like, almost like farm buildings on there, aren't there?
Yeah, so I guess a lot of people store a lot of different things. I have in-laws who have way more stuff than I think you would classify as just like residential, but it is just their house. I think that's the same with Mr. Holding as well. He's not doing anything else there other than just living, it's just his family there.
So residential?
It is residential.
A single residential home, this qualifies as, not a?
Yeah, it's just a lot of, it just has a lot of additional buildings. I mean, it's one of the things, things that I've seen, like when people push to have extra garages or extra sheds, people just have a lot of things, whether that be ice houses, boats, snowmobiles, all sorts of things.
But I thought you were only allowed to have one storage building or something on a residential lot.
Yeah, so that's, and so since they have two lots, I think that's something we can look at as far as like going back and just kind of allowing. But I mean, we do have multiple non-conformities in town as a result of just like what's been, what's happened in the past and like things that come in.
I understand that, I just, this is almost like saying it's okay. So I just don't, I can understand annexing it in, I'm just questioning whether it really should be a residential.
Yeah, so I mean, staff can look at the ways that they're non-compliant now and then force them to come into compliance, whether if they had to, I guess, consolidate one of their sheds, consolidate down to one shed, but I mean, we could, we could look at that too.
I'm not suggesting that we make them take sheds off, I just don't think it should be residential. I think we have other categories that it might fit into besides just a single-family home. So that's my question.
Okay.
Our city attorney, Robert, you want to say something?
Thank you.
Sir, Mayor, members of the council, just to be clear on the zoning question, once the property is annexed, the city could certainly look at what zoning district makes the most sense, and it may be that you would like to zone it as something other than residential. The, I think the concept that Planning Director Walker was trying to explain is the protection for legal non-conforming uses. So as long as the current use of this property and the buildings on the property were legal, even if it was in the township when they were created, that use will be protected. So even if the city were to zone it, for example, as industrial property, that will guide any new development on that site, but so long as it's continued to be used for its existing residential purpose, statute and city code would protect that use and allow it to continue as a legal non-conforming use.
Okay. Thank you, Robert. Any questions? Julie?
What's the advantage or disadvantage for us to do this? I see his advantage because he gets utilities, but why would we want to do this?
Yeah, I think for us, it's just kind of, they petition ask in, and I think talking to the directors, I mean, we already serve them, I mean, he's already served by electric, they already get water, they just don't have sewer. And so essentially, it was like they're already in the city, it's just not contiguous, we just weren't getting taxes for it. So we're already essentially serving them, it's just not sewer. So for us, I mean, advantage is very minimal, but.
Taxes, taxes. It increases the tax base also. But it also, like Justice had said, we're already serving water and electric, and why he wasn't annexed at that time, that those kind of utility services were offered, I can't say what the council's idea was on that or what planning was on that. But now, this is when we do these kind of things, is when people want to come in for services. It's only a smart thing to do is to bring them into the city limits, and then you don't have this issue. It is already surrounded three sides of the city, so it's a very, it's just a very minimal exercise in passing the ordinance to approve the annexation.
Yes, Tom.
Who's going to pay for the, to get it hooked up?
He does.
Tapping fees?
Yep, so all of that is on the property owner.
Any other, Vicki?
To follow up on why would we want to, is there a reason why we wouldn't want to? Can you answer that?
I'd say not really. It's, I'd say, like I said, I mean, it really just, even though the increase of the tax base is minimal, we were already, like I said, we're already serving them utilities, talking to all the department heads who had to review it. No one really had any objections to it. Everyone was just kind of, we're already doing this anyway, they're already within our purview, like, everyone was more confused that they weren't already in the city to begin with. So like I said, no real reason for us not to.
Okay, thank you.
Any other input or questions? If not, it's, I need a resolution introduced.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second to approve. This is a resolution, roll call.
Councilmember Osk?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Sholdas?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Butterfield?
No.
Osmus?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Beat, seven yes, one no.
Resolution passes. Thank you, Justice. Certification of Classification of Tax Forfeited Properties. Who's handling this, Kyle?
Kyle will be.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, in your packet this evening, the council will be asked to certify the classification of tax forfeited properties within the city of Wilmer. There are three properties to be considered tonight. One is a residential lot located at 51213th Street Southeast. The other two properties are off, are a private street that's used over by the Culvers Restaurant, and then the vacant outlot just west of that private street. These properties have been forfeited to the state of Minnesota for non-payment of property taxes. As such, Candy White County has valued these parcels at the following: $65,000, $1,400, and $15, $50, respectively. There are special assessments levied against all three parcels, which would be collected from the proceeds of sales or assessed against said property at the time of sale. If the council does wish to move forward with this certification, I do have forms that do need to be signed by all council members before you leave this evening. If there's any questions at this time, I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Any questions? Yes. Audrey?
Thank you, Mayor Reese. I just have questions and maybe some comments on those two lots that are next to, or the two pieces next to Culvers. What happens if no one buys them? That property has been a problem for a long time, and the city has taken a bad rap for the, that private road, and why it is as bad as it is, and why it's such a mess, and the ditch, et cetera. And so I can see why they haven't been paying their taxes, because I don't think there's anything benefit. I don't know how we ended up with these pieces the way we did, but my question is, so what if no one buys it?
What happens going forward?
Yes.
Is that they are the state's property, and the county is responsible for placing them up for sale. If they don't sell, they will continue being the state's property unless the city wants to pay a buck to buy them.
I have no idea why we would buy them, because, I mean, it's just a, it's just, in my mind, a bad design that we have a private road that goes to multiple businesses. And so my question just is, who's going to maintain these if, you know, if the state of Minnesota or, you know?
I'll have Gary, we do have agreements with the state of Minnesota, but Gary will elaborate on that.
Thank you.
So we've been working on this for a while, and as you know, that's been a problem for a couple of years.
As you know, that's been a problem for a couple of years. And I personally talked to, uh, Cub Foods and talked to their upper management there. They have no interest in having that road there because they have their entrances off of First Street. So they're, as far as they're concerned, they had no interest or no stake in the game. I also talked to the owner of Culvers and I said, this is in their best interest to own this piece of property because the person that owned the property called me and said they're no longer going to pay taxes on it and they were going to let it go. So I knew this was going to happen. I talked to the owner of Culvers and I was like, this is your driveway coming into your store. He asked me if he could shut it off to, to Cub Food. I said, it's your driveway. I'm assuming you could do whatever you want with it, you know? So anyways, what has happened is nothing. And, uh, so last year we went in there and we spent a good part of a day in their patch and getting it back just because everybody uses it, you know? It's, it's one of those roads that we just had to do something with it. But, uh, so we kind of worked with the county on that. We kind of collaborated together on it and shared the cost and did what we could do there. But if the city was to own that road, that road really needs to be rebuilt because drainage is a huge problem there and it's always going to be a problem unless they address the drainage in that low area there. So, um, I know I get a lot of phone calls about that and I get a lot of phone calls about the mall, probably as you guys do as well. So, um, where we go from there, I guess, uh, I don't know. We'll just have to see how it comes, you know? But I know it's going to be a problem going forward this summer because it's, with all the snow and stuff we're going to have, it's going to bust up again, so.
There is a back piece of property that has a separate ownership, I think, too. And so, um, you know, if, if, I don't know why.
I think my understanding from the previous owner, he told me that he wanted to sell that because he owned all that property at one time, this person did. And he wanted to sell that with that driveway and that lot is in between Culvers and, uh, Cub. He wanted that as all to go together. For whatever reason, that didn't happen. At least now he's got that piece there that is, uh, behind the old Office Max and then the driveway. And another caveat to that area there, that there is a sanitary sewer line that runs from the KEC, the old KEC, and it comes through in between Culvers and Cubs. And it gets, um, and it churns and goes just a little bit north to the Office Max and then goes out between the Office Max and the next building to the south there and dumps into the city main. And Culvers is on that main and I'm not sure if Cub is on that one or not. So that's another one. The, the new car wash is not a part of that. Initially, that's what they were looking at, but that's not a part of that one. It goes to Fifth Street, but, so yeah, there's another little part of that too, you know? Because Cub Sewer is served through that, through that, uh, private sewer, which was owned by the, uh, the owners of the KEC. And I think they had a, they own that sewer and I don't know how that, how that agreement worked with the businesses that are tied into it.
I, I guess, to me, it's a bad, it has been a bad design and it would, I just am concerned that the city's going to end up having to spend more money on something that has no benefit to, I mean, it should be, it should be the benefit to the private people who own the property.
That's unfortunate, the way it's set up because, you know, I mean, I've kind of watched it in, um, I would say 80% of the traffic goes to Cub Foods and the other 20% goes to Culvers. And, um, Culvers, that's really their only decent entrance into their property right there. They have the other entrance that's a little bit east, but it's really difficult to get in there. Cause you, you know, so yeah, it's, it's really an unfortunate, unfortunate the way it is. I don't, I mean, I have some ideas, but I don't have the answer. So I mean, um, I guess.
Councilmember Davis.
Yeah, I'm curious, if the state owns it currently, how come they don't take care of it?
Well, I think that's kind of like, I think, I don't know where we're at with state properties, but I know at one time there used to be different lots that went back to tax forfeit and different, how, like I remember up in the Osce Meadows or Osce Heights area, there were some lots that went back on tax forfeiture that the state owned and they didn't take care of those as well. They just, you know, we ended up going up mowing the grass just to keep the grass down in them. And I, I'm sure there's other properties around. I don't know where that sits now, but I know for a while there were different areas like that, that I suppose they're undevelopable or whatever, and so it's not worth paying the tax on them.
Councilmember Sholdas.
I'm just curious if anybody's talked to TJ Maxx about, if there's anything they could do with that.
I don't know if anybody's addressed TJ Maxx, but I think that they knew. Oh, go ahead, Leslie.
Yes, we've already discussed that with TJ Maxx long before this evening was an issue. And no, they have decided that they no longer, they didn't want that piece of property anymore. At the time that we were talking to TJ Maxx, it was not under the state control. It was still probably in the process of that. And, um, the state, the only thing that we can do right now is if we do do any work on it, we continually just put it on assessments. That's all we can do right now, but.
Audrey.
I think Councilmember Osk goes first. You can.
Just quickly, um, I'm assuming because of the forecast tonight, I'm thinking about this. It's currently someone's removing snow from it. Would that be the city?
No.
Who's doing that?
I have no idea. Whoever plows their lots. Yeah, I have no idea who does it.
One of these businesses must be paying for it to be done then.
Correct, yep.
It, it just strikes me as something like, as it currently is right now, two businesses are benefiting from this as, as a driveway.
Correct.
If, if the owner of this stopped plowing or shut off the private drive, would it not motivate one, if not both of those businesses, to invest in the property? Like if, if they stop making it accessible?
Yeah, I mean, I'll be honest with you, I spoke with, uh, Public Works Director of Kandia County about it and he said, maybe we just put a barricade on the end of it now to get their attention. I mean, I mean, that in reality, that's what's going to get the attention to it. Something's got to be done there. It's just not a good situation and it's not that big of a road really, I mean.
Right, right now, this is the process that we go through because this county will put these parcels up for sale later, at a later date. When that happens, probably late fall or maybe even next year. I'm not sure what time cycle this is at, but that's what will happen. There'll be a public hearing for these sales and they'll put them on their website for sale. So that's the process that has to go through for us and for the state and for the county. The county is the one that does all this work for the state.
And if the city wished to purchase that land, that would happen before the public auction?
Yes.
Thank you.
Councilmember Nelson.
So just, um, we're being asked tonight to make a motion that we're not interested in this for public purpose, correct?
I guess I'm gonna.
Correct.
I'm gonna.
You can make that at this time.
Okay, then the second thing, can we, I mean, if, I guess I'm concerned that we stop spending money on it because could we actually assess the state of Minnesota on property if, if they owned it?
Well, I know that when we did repairs, we, we billed the property to, you know, so we billed our, our expenses to that property. So I suppose that would become under that special assessment to that property.
It was still under the owner's name at the time we did the work.
Right, but the assessments are probably more, there's probably more assessments than what someone's.
No, we don't have any more assessments than what work we did last year to fill the potholes.
All right.
Rick?
I would make the motion that, like now I lost my. Whatever we need to do tonight to say we're not interested in these properties. Second.
What's that?
Tonight's.
Tonight's just a.
Tonight's just a certification of classification of tax forfeited properties. It's just a step in the procedure.
And that's a simple motion. And we, Audrey, are you making that motion?
Sure.
Did we have a second?
Second.
Vicki seconds it? Rick, you got a question?
I had a question for Gary. So that outlot, would there be a benefit to the city to own that?
I don't, I don't think there would be. I mean, we don't own.
Anything that goes.
Pardon me?
There's no culvert that goes in there or?
No, all that's private. So even the sewer, there's actually a private sewer, it doesn't belong to the city. We don't own the sewer until it gets to First Street.
Where is Culvers property line on that so-called street?
Um, I've looked at it, I don't remember. It's, it, the street itself is kind of, it kind of follows the street a little bit. And then when you get to the south side of Culvers, there's like a straight line that leaves one lot in between Culvers and Cubs. I've looked at it on GIS, you know, I don't know how exact that is, but it kind of follows the roadway.
But it's not on state property.
Pardon me?
It's not on state property.
No.
Culvers, no, no.
No, the, the drive.
Right.
Correct.
Right.
When it was all parceled out, it does, when the site work needed to be done, this roads were created and such, and that's how this was all platted at that time. So Culvers lot does not go halfway into the road at all.
Yeah, because the guy that originally owned it, the one I talked to, he owned all the property. And so he had it drawn up with the Culvers in there. But I suppose for whatever reason, he kept the road out of it for future development to the other properties or something. I have no idea, I'm just speculating.
So is there any recorded easements on that road?
I couldn't answer that. I couldn't answer that.
What was the question, Rick?
Is there any recorded easements on that road for the culvert property or to Cub?
Yes, these parcels are not easements. It's this parcel, it's just this parcel, these two separate parcels that were created when it was platted out.
But they don't have, uh, access to that road? They just using it then?
I can't tell you how the, how the site was all developed and how, you know, it was, you know, the person that platted this, his thought was that they, he was going to give them access to this road into that piece of parcel that he sold to Car, Culvers. And then there are other accesses then out onto the other street, so. I can't answer that, how, but there's no easement. It's not, it's a road, it's a platted road.
So what are the special assessments against those two parcels?
Uh, I believe it is, I think we also did some lawn mowing on that parcel that's right behind TJ Maxx. And then we also did, uh, filling in the potholes.
So that's it then? Less than a thousand bucks probably, huh?
Yeah, I believe so.
Cause you could, I mean, you could buy them for a dollar now.
And then?
And put a barricade up.
You could.
And then you could sell easements to Cub, that vacant lot or the culverts.
Otherwise you buy it and you assess them for all the work that needs to be done.
Yeah.
Commercial property is assessed at 100%.
Yeah, because I know when we, uh, had to get an easement from the railroad for the new Wilmer Avenue, we had to pay them, you know, $7,000. I know when Home State Bank bought an easement of the property to the east, they paid dearly. Lake Region Bank paid Legion dearly for an easement for their parking lot, so. I mean, it's, it's a possibility for us.
Yep.
Councilmember Nelson.
Wouldn't that really be Culvers' issue? I mean, when they bought the property, they had to have had some arrangements to get in and out. So it, to me, it's their responsibility to figure out their purchase agreement or if there's something there. It, to me, it just looks like money that the city is going to have to invest in it and we're not going to be able to make it a real street anyway. So, um, I think, I think a barricade maybe is the solution for the county and the city to get somebody to do something about it.
It's confusing to me when I look at the drawing. Who actually owns the property that the road is on?
Pardon?
Who actually owns the property that the road is on?
The previous owner.
Yeah.
It was the Schultz.
Ken Schneider.
Well, whatever is on the sheet here. Schmidt family, it's the Schmidt family.
Or Kent Schmidt, that's it. And he, he left.
He was a Culvers.
He, he, he left here to go to Marshall to build a Culvers. Julie.
Okay, just for future reference, was this something that, um, was the Planning and Development Director? Was this a planning commission issue? Was this the city council approved a sale for those kinds of property? Or did city government not have any say because it's all private sales of a business?
No, but we can't answer why the planning department, what their thoughts were on how they let this plat be developed like this. The, the normal process is the planning development has to review all plats and they have to look at these things and make sure that roads are where they are at and who's going to be responsible for them and where the easements are at for utilities and such, and make sure that they're all, where are our electric lines or sewer lines or water lines, all that is supposed to be part of reviewing plats. So at the time that this was platted, and I have no idea when it was platted, but they apparently thought this was a good idea.
Okay.
Where are we?
I made a motion.
I'm a motion.
You got a second? Okay.
We're at the vote.
And that's a, that's a motion. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. All right, next item, consider a, a resolution for a sound system at Orange Field. Kyle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Get my memo up here. Uh, tonight at the council's request, a sound, or for the council is being, is, staff is requesting, uh, that a sound system be installed at the Orange Field Ballpark. The sound system would be paid if approved by council with contingency funds from the Swanson Field project. A quote from Bacchus Technology Services, Inc., was received in the amount of $17,626.88. And for council's information, the amount left in the contingency funds for said project is 29, as of today, is $29,101.56. And if this, if this is approved, this would complete the Orange Field, uh, project. And I know that contingency funds were going to be an item that was going to be brought back to the council at a, a later date for decision. However, staff feels at this time, since this would complete the project, um, that this would be a good opportunity to do so. But if there's any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. Questions? Audrey.
Thank you, Mayor Reese. So I have two questions. So, um, did we get more than one bid? And is this something that the Local Option Sales Tax Group for Swanson Field is approving also?
We did receive more than one bid. Um, I know that it wasn't included in the packet and I can't tell you who it was, but I did talk to Rob and he's sorry he couldn't make tonight's meeting. He had a parent, he, a parent event going on tonight. So, um, but there are two bids that were received. And, um, I, Audrey, I'm not sure, and your second question?
My second question is, I, I know there were various things that that group wanted to do with contingency funds. And so my question is, is somebody from that Local Option Sales Tax Group, are they okay with this?
Yes, they are very anxious to have the sound system put in.
Okay.
Could we just make sure that the second bid?
Yes.
Is included in the information? Thank you.
Okay. That's a resolution?
Yes.
Yes.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
There's a motion and a second.
We already got it, we already got it, okay. Roll call.
Councilmember Osk.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Sholdas.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Beggarly.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Any community pride announcements?
But I do have one, um, the council workshop. I need to know if everybody is on board on having it March 14th. I didn't get 100% responses from council, so I need to make sure that everybody's on board for that. Also, I'd like to let you know that you received an email today from me regarding the Rescape Awards, which Block 25 is part of, which is through the Brown, the Minnesota Brownsfield Award Project for changing the landscaping. And that is, uh, the award is April 6th. We're planning, we do have room for a couple council members if they'd like to join us. And, um, the EDC will have a couple representatives there along with Lumber One and then the city of, uh, Wilmer. And I think it's a great project that we can really have some great promotion for and the great opportunities the city of Wilmer has had there. And, um, then March 9th is, uh, Day on the Hill with the League of Minnesota Cities. If anybody else is interested in attending, I do have two council people that will be attending on that date already. If anyone else would like to join us, please let me know.
Okay, March 14th, it was what time?
March 14th at 6:30.
And that's, where?
Pardon?
Where is it being held?
Uh, to be announced yet, either the Fire Hall or otherwise the Event Center.
Okay, Audrey?
Leslie, I don't think we got that email.
The Rescape, I sent it this morning.
Nope.
I didn't get it.
I'll double check, but I'm, I will double check that, make sure you get it. Sorry about that.
No, I don't have it either.
Okay.
Are you having any meetings next week?
Yes. Yes, we will have council admin briefings next week.
Tuesday, or what?
Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
Any further business? If not, we're adjourned.